And we're live.
Good morning, everyone. If I could ask Mike to do a roll call, please.
Counselor Moffett.
Present.
Warden Danielson.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Kennedy.
Present.
Counselor Burton.
Present.
Counselor Ryle.
Present.
Counselor Devolin.
Present.
And Counselor Shaw.
Present.
Thank you.
And could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda? Counselor Devolin, Counselor Burton.
Moved by Counselor Devolin, seconded by Counselor Burton, be it resolved that the April 14th, 2021 Halliburton County Committee of the Whole Agenda be approved?
All in favor? Carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof this morning? Hearing none, we will move on to delegations. And this morning that we have hopefully from the city of Coortha Lakes to talk to us about the affordable housing targets. And just a small change, you'll note that item number 14 is also about affordable housing and the terms of reference for the steering committee. So if you don't mind Hope staying on the line and we can talk about that following your first presentation.
Sure. So, Warden, members of council, thanks for the opportunity today. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Affordable Housing Target Program. I'm gonna give a little bit of background and talk about the program, but really I want to concentrate on the last couple of slides around how we're trying to refine the program and some next steps. So, next slide, please. So, the background, we really started this work back in 2016, 2017. So, we engaged a consultant to help us work through an affordable housing framework. So, that framework was really looking at any kinds of municipal incentives that municipalities could use to attract different proponents to help us build affordable housing. So, it went through a whole toolbox of what those incentives look like and also included some ways that we could implement those in the city and county. So, that framework was actually adopted right down to the four local municipalities. That happened over late 2017 and early 2018. And then that really helped us as we were refreshing the 10-year housing and homelessness plan, as we developed those targets over the next 10-year period, to then create the Affordable Housing Target Program. So, the little graphic there just reminds you that the county has adopted to try and create 750 additional rental units over the next 10 years, and this program is really to help that happen. Next slide. So, the intent of the program is really to have one avenue to request all of those incentives. So, this program isn't just for a certain group. This is to attract private developers, nonprofits, K L H housing, even down to a private individual who could build a secondary suite in their unit. So, we're looking at a wide variety of folks who can help us to meet those targets. So, although we say it's one avenue, it certainly doesn't preclude proponents from presenting their plans. So, maybe they want to present early on of what they're considering. But the intent is really that the approvals for all of those municipal incentives occur through this program formally. That really gives a clear and consistent approach for all of those different proponents. So, they understand exactly what they can apply for. If you look at the policy, it talks about the different incentive, how it's provided, and the different proponent types that can receive that incentive. So, for example, one of the nonprofits that we fund and administer may be able to take advantage of more of those incentives than a private developer, for example. We're able to do this under the authority of both our service manager role and the Municipal Act. So, the city of Coortha Lakes in its role as the service manager has adopted what's called a municipal housing facilities bylaw. We've actually had that in place. I think we first put it in place back in 2006, and then we did an update to it as we adopted that affordable housing framework in 2018. So, that's really the authority to be able to provide all of those incentives that are within that policy to all those different proponent types. And the service manager administers the program. So, knowing that there's not always the resources at the local municipalities, we're actually signing the agreements with proponents and doing the ongoing monitoring of those agreements, some of which may flow into the future as far as 40 years. Next slide. So, this is really how the program works, a bit of a workflow. So, you'll recall, we modified the program. It was originally supposed to be an annual intake. We now have a quarterly intake. But ongoing throughout the year is the ability for anybody to do that expression of interest process. So, that's a very simple form that they can complete with some very high-level information. And then what happens on a quarterly structured basis is that the Affordable Housing Program Coordinator actually looks at those expressions of interest and brings forward any that are ready to kind of come through the next intake period. So, part of that initial kind of review is the Affordable Housing Program Coordinator making sure that the proponents eligible. So, that might mean a lease contacting your CAOs or your treasurers or your tax department, for example, to make sure there's no outstanding tax arrears, there's no outstanding building code issues, for example. From that, they go to a full application submission. So, a lease would help them through that process. If needed, there would be meetings where we might even call some of your municipal staff in on those application meetings. So, for example, if there were questions around zoning or a building permit, we'd contact those applicable staff. Then what happens from there is there's a formal technical review that happens. So, if the project was in Minden Hills, we would be engaging with your C A O, your C B O, your planning staff, fire whoever needs to provide some comments back on that project, including providing the estimates around the municipal incentives. So, while we're helping to administer this program, we're certainly not the experts in your areas or in those different fields of practice. So, that happens before it actually gets to the steering committee to be recommended. So, in the county, the steering committee is made up, the C A O of the county sits on that, the director of planning, the treasurer for the county sits on that, as well as city staff. And then those recommendations flow through to your councils through your CAOs. So, that steering committee will put together a report around the recommendations, provide that to your CAOs, and then your CAOs present that. If somebody from the city or county needs to be there, certainly that can happen. But like I say, throughout the process, your staff have also been involved, so they should be familiar enough to present the project as well. After those approvals happen, we get into the agreements. So, we would enter into those agreements with the different proponents, confirm back with you that those agreements are in place. Then the project takes place, the units are created, and then there's an annual monitoring. So, depending on what incentives they're receiving, there's a Pacific affordability period that they have to keep that unit affordable. So, on an annual basis, we're verifying that that unit has been kept at that affordable rent and that someone who's eligible to be in that unit is in that unit. So, next slide. So, really, my intent for being here today is to kind of talk about how we're refining the program and kind of the next steps that we need help both at the county and the local municipality level. So, we did, there is an overarching policy around the municipal incentives that have been adopted both at the city and county. But really, the four local municipalities should adopt their own policy with the incentives that they're willing or able to provide. So, that will really help us as we're going through the process. If you're not going to offer one of the incentives, we need to be able to tell the proponent that upfront. It's going to assist that technical team, so your staff are going to be well aware of what council will approve when it comes forward. And it will assist the steering committee so that as well, they won't be recommending incentives for projects where there's not the ability then for council to approve that. It will really, it could also go as far as delegating some of those municipal incentives directly to the steering committee if there was some comfort level in that. So, there could be certain incentives that are just under the authority of the steering committee so that those could just be approved right there at that process level and then more reported back to the councils rather than asking for approval. And then the report that's been moved up on your agenda has some changes to the overall implementation policy and the terms of reference for the steering committee. So, now it defines that the CAOs are taking those steering committee recommendations forward to their councils. So, there will be a full report from the steering committee that the CAOs can use to do that. And then one other step that we're asking happens is that municipalities identify any surplus municipal land. So, one of the municipal incentives is providing municipal surplus land for affordable housing. It was also in that toolbox of the Affordable Housing Framework. Land is one of the most difficult, one of the more expensive pieces of affordable housing. So, if your municipality can look at your municipal parcels of land, define which ones that you want to be used for affordable housing, and even put some requirements around that. So, are there certain types of units that you want built on that or a certain number of units? And then, as we're doing the quarterly intakes, those parcels of land can be available to those proponents to identify as well. Next slide. So, just in closing, we did have a very successful first intake. So, we approved two homeownership. There's the new rental project that will create the 35 units in Minden, and there's two secondary suite projects that were approved. We're just in the initial phases of the next intake, but there are multiple applications. And I know there's a couple for the county. Again, there's a rental project and secondary suite projects. So, what we want to do is really keep the interest there by consistently improving the program. So, one of the things that we're doing, as well as talking to you and staff, is going back to the proponents that are going through the program to ask them how they see the program could be improved going forward as well. And just the last point, that as you're working through some of those things at the local council levels, we can certainly assist either the city or the county C A O can help to assist with some of that work that needs to be done. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. One question I had with respect to each municipality developing a policy outlining the incentives that they provide, are those incentives provided equally to all applicants? Or can you pick and choose from among the incentives that you've identified? For instance, there might be a big difference in the scope of a project, and you might want to add or add certain incentives that you might not offer to other smaller applications? Or would they be applied across the board?
Yeah, so, good question. So, the overarching policy, when you look at that, there are certain incentives that we would offer to certain proponents. So, for example, if it is a nonprofit or K L H, there's a greater level of incentives that can be offered. The way that you can structure the policy around a smaller or larger project and the amount of the incentives is really around the affordability period, too. So, the more incentives that you're providing or the larger the project, you might want to ask for that affordability period to be longer. So, certainly, I think there's enough structure in the overarching policy that you can set some of those local conditions, too. I think the important piece is the policies there, and then it's clear and consistent going forward for proponents of what your municipality will actually approve going forward.
Counselor Devolin, you have a question?
Yeah, just obviously through municipalities and nonprofits, there's incentives that can be offered that we don't have to worry about what's called bonusing. But thinking a bit outside the box for private interests that want to do things, are there other tools like community improvement plans and those sort of things that we could have help or could create so that we could maybe broaden? You know, we look, go back to that sheet, and I think it had 500 within the county from the private side. Is there some mechanisms and tools we can use there municipally to broaden that appeal? You know, I think with the housing corporations, whether it's K L L H or some of the other ones around nonprofits, that's going along quite well. But is there something that we can do there to help put a dent in that pretty big number?
Yeah, so through the Warden, the authority under that municipal housing bylaw is through the Municipal Act and the Housing Services Act. So, it does give the ability, it's not seen as bonusing, it gives the ability to provide those incentives even to a private developer. So, the authority is there. It's not just for not-for-profits or K L H. The authority lets that happen without it being considered bonusing. You mentioned C I Ps, so I think there's a real benefit. So, I know Minden has a C I P, and there's an affordable housing component in it. So, I think that's a great mechanism to be able to stack some of those things, too, right? So, if your C I P is offering some grants for affordable housing, and then the Affordable Housing Target Program has the certain incentives around fees and charges, I think that's a great way to stack it and provide more units and even more, a longer affordability period.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, Hope, you know, we had a proposal come forward to disert council, and because we didn't have policies in place, there was some confusion. And there was also some confusion in the, let's call it the math, that the technical team, which came up with. And so, it left us in a sort of awkward situation, and we met with you after. We still don't have policies in place. So, I recall you did send an email to our C A O, but I'm not sure if they were actual policies or it was just more about the program. So, I really, really think that this is important. Ironically, we did pass it after it came back to another council meeting with clarification on the fee to hook up to our sewer system. And unfortunately, the proponents weren't able to get their funding. But we need those policies in place, so it's non-political. And that was my thing, is that it isn't like, oh, we like this project or we don't like this project, it's just it qualifies or it doesn't qualify. And so, if you don't mind reaching out to the C A O at Disert anyway, it probably would need to reach out to all of them. So, that, because each lower tier might have slightly different policy, but overall, it would be very similar. And the sooner we can get that in place, the better. So, if you don't mind reaching out to our C A O, thanks.
Yeah, and just your comment around that you don't have a local policy yet. So, technically, you fall under that overarching county policy. The reason we're asking you to do the local policies is so that it's very clear and consistent across the board, like you mentioned. And I have provided that information, and I think Mike's provided it as well, but certainly I'll reach out again and provide it overall again as well, too.
Yeah, that was one of the things that I was going to ask that might make sure that that happened. And I don't know if you've spoken about it at your C A O meetings or if you could do that.
Yeah, we've spoken about it at our C A Os' meetings, but I'll certainly take these changes should they go forward to our meeting on Friday.
Are there other questions for Hope? About the information so far? Okay, so, before we get into the terms of reference, if I could have a mover and a seconder to receive this report, Counselor Roberts and Counselor Moffett, thank you.
Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Moffett, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the April 14th, 2021 Affordable Housing Target Program presentation.
All in favor? Carried. So, the proposed amendments to the program and the terms of reference, the report has been submitted by both Mike and Hope. So, I'm not sure which one of you wants to first speak to that, and then we can get into questions.
Hope's the smart one.
Okay. Over to you, Hope.
Sure. Okay, so, like I mentioned in the presentation, we're constantly trying to refine the program and make it better. So, a couple of things here for you to consider this morning. So, there's a few changes to the terms of reference. One of them is as I retire and my position splits of making the manager of housing actually the chair of this program. So, initially, because my position was a combination of both the manager and the C E O of the corporation, to withdraw any kind of conflict that might be seen as me being the chair and also a proponent to the program, we had the program supervisor do that. But now that the positions are split, that's the first change, is making that new manager of housing actually the chair of this.
There, just, I have asked Hope to come to the, that change is as a result of the governance review that was done by the city of Coortha Lakes and last year. And I've asked Hope to come and do a full presentation to county council on that at the end of the month. So, in two weeks, you'll get all the detail around that change.
So, the other change around this is just clarifying that once the steering committee makes the recommendations, they'll provide a report to the CAOs of the local municipalities, and then the intent is those C AOs would present those recommendations to their councils. So, those are the changes in the terms of reference. The other change is to the policy around the implementation of the program. So, what we've done is just made some reference to the program Pacific Criteria Management directives that we have. So, the Affordable Housing Target Program actually has several programs within it, depending on what type of unit is being created. So, whether it's a secondary suite, new home, new rental. So, there's some Pacific Management Directives around that. So, we've just referenced that they form a part of this policy as well. And then the change again to the manager of housing being the chair instead of the program supervisor. And we've added a reference that the technical teams will actually sign off. We're doing that so that we make sure before we recommend it through the steering committee that it's got the best information attached to it. So, like Counselor Roberts mentioned, there was some discrepancy in the amount of the incentive. So, this way, we'll make sure that that technical team has actually, we've got the latest information from that technical team and that it's provided by the staff person that's most familiar with that. There's a marketing and communications process to this program where we have information sessions or webinars available to the public. But we've thought it's probably a good idea that we provide that to staff on a regular basis as well. So, at least once a year, the Affordable Housing Program Coordinator will hold information sessions with any of the staff that would be involved in this program as well. So, I think that's the amount of the changes. The changes to the agreements are just kind of cleaning up. We've been able to create that one municipal housing facilities agreement instead of having a separate agreement so that everybody's signing the same type of agreement. So, I'll stop there if Mike wants to add anything or if there's any questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor Devolin?
Not just a question, but a comment to Hope, knowing that you're soon leaving us and you can't be replaced. That's my opinion, but anyway, the wonderful evolution of this work and this program that's rolled out across our county and to endeavor that even you can reach more of our community. But just the good hints that you've left it in and the fact that this is kind of like a living document, that if we make mistakes along the way that you set in place a process that will morph and change with it, that serves everybody the best. So, just for you and your whole team and those at the county and municipalities that have been part of evolving all this, just a huge, huge thanks to all of them and especially to you. Thank you.
By the fact that you're being replaced by two people, how much work you've been doing, no question about it. One comment and then one question. It's kind of going back to the incentives, but I'm just hoping that we can streamline and create something amongst the four municipalities that is as close as possible that we can get to reduce confusion and questions about the program. The only thing that I saw in the terms of reference that I wanted to ask about was that a quorum for the steering committee is 50% as opposed to 50% plus one? And maybe your clerk can clarify that that's the way things are now, but to me, that does not say a quorum.
I'll have to, I'll have to check into that, but I.
Should it not be 50% plus one?
Typically, yeah. I'll have to check in for the reasons on that, but we will review that.
Okay. So, we have a resolution about the terms of reference in the second report. So, is that something that would be impacted by us passing the motion or no?
No, we would just, if it requires an amendment, we would just bring it back with that amendment, actually.
Okay. So, are there any other questions or comments about the presentation? Okay, so are there any other questions or comments about the presentation? Hearing none, could I have a mover and a seconder to accept the amendments to the targets? Counselor Shell and Counselor Kennedy, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole received for information the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one Proposed Amendments to the Affordable Housing Targets Program Staff Report and recommends to Halliburton County Council that the Affordable Housing Targets Program Implementation Policy and the Terms of Reference for the Affordable Housing Targets Program Steering Committee be amended to include the changes outlined in the report.
All in favor? That's Carrie. Thanks very much, Hope, and we look forward to seeing you at the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is adoption of minutes from our previous Committee of the Whole meeting. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Moffett? Counselor Burton?
Moved by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Burton. Be it resolved that the minutes from the March tenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Halliburton County Council Committee of the Whole be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next on the agenda is correspondence. And the first item is a request for support for the National Strategy on Guaranteed Basic Income. Counselor Devolin?
Yeah, I mean, this is something that I've wrestled with. And I'll preface it first that saying, I wish the basic income project had not been canceled in the city of Cothalakes so that there could have been more information, more metrics. And this kind of like, I bring this home like things that would, within my own household. There's things that you'd like to do that affordability becomes a question is kind of the first part. So I mean, if the big notion in advance of the federal budget, there's been some noise that whether we would move in that direction nationally is, is can we afford it? And to me, the business case and the money side of this. And I paid attention not only to what was shown in Ontario and Manitoba in the past and other jurisdictions. And there's been no good business plan proposed about this notion. And the second one is, as we all know, whether it's municipally with staff or within the county to get things done, is the labor market. And there's a whole other part of the analysis of the labor market that I would like to see before I'm prepared to have a position on this. At this time, I'm not for it or against it. But on both of those counts, I would definitely want informations that substantially done, not on the back of a napkin analysis about the impacts, whether it's in our region, the province, or the country on this. So at this time, I'm not prepared to support it in the absence of that information. And I hope that's not perceived as mean spirited. But this is, we're talking billions and billions of dollars. And this is a legacy thing. It's not a one time and you spend that money and it's done. This would be, you know, you look at healthcare costs, which were a legacy from many decades ago, which is a very worthwhile program, but we know how much it costs. And I kind of put it in that category. So at this point, I'm not prepared to do it. But I would love to see the information, both on labor markets and the actual costing for this at whatever level that this would be considered.
I'm really pleased to hear those comments. I spent quite a bit of time thinking about this last night and struggling with it because it's something that we would like to see happen. I mean, it's a good thing. But, you know, we are so far in the hole that I just don't know that we can actually afford to do this right now. And that's, you know, that's my struggle. So I'd like to hear comments from others. Counselor Moffett?
Yeah, like you, I'm sort of glad I didn't go first, I guess. In the letter, it says that the act would, and I'm looking at and reading it, the act would provide much-needed answers about how guaranteed basic income would work in partnership with the provinces, what effect it would have on the efficiency of government, how it could support entrepreneurship and job creation. And those are all exactly the things we need to know. It feels a bit chicken and egg to me because I want to know that now. We have been facing a lot of what we call downloading by stealth, different changes in what we're expected to pay for at the municipal level. You know, what funding would municipalities possibly play in this? We don't know. Is there, is it like other opportunities where you might have to put some money in the pot based on the number of people who are in the program? Look, let's be honest, there's no question that a basic income program is a great idea. And I'd love to see how it works so that I can wholeheartedly throw my support behind it. But I'm, I just, I feel like I just don't know enough about the questions that are in the letter. That's what I want to know first. I don't know, I don't know which way that works. So similarly to what Counselor Devolin has said, Hope, it doesn't seem as mean spirited as opposed to an informed and pragmatic investment in the future of the community.
Counselor Shell?
I would agree when I, and I also would agree that the basic income is a wonderful idea. But without knowing what impact that might have on our local municipal budgets that we already struggle to keep, you know, at bay, it's hard to be in, it's hard to say, okay, today and put this through. So is it like, are we expecting to have more information back on this, Mike, before, you know, anything's really decided? Or is this, is it something that we have to decide today? Or can we get more information back? Because, I mean, I'd love to be able to say yes, but again, we need to know what the bottom line means for municipalities because we're constantly getting stuff pushed on to us that, you know, we just can't afford.
Counselor Roberts and Counselor Moffett?
I don't know, did, because Counselor Shell's asked Mike to ask a question and I can hold off on my question if Mike wanted to answer Counselor Shell's question.
I, Mike, through you, Warden. My understanding, based on the letter, is that the act would actually answer many of those questions. I don't think that, like, the act would actually create a process to answer those questions. And so I don't think, they're asking us to support the act. And so I don't think we'll have those questions before this is passed, is that, or those answers, sorry, before this is actually
And as Carol said, one of the problems, it's chicken and egg. You know, we would like to have that information first, before supporting the act. Go ahead, Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Warden. I, Counselor Devolin brought up a great point. And so something I really think that we could support would be the pilot project being reestablished. Because that, we never got to see the result of the three-year pilot project. And that would answer a lot of those questions. It was, it was pulled out. And I know from being on the Board of Health, the number one indicator of health is poverty, if I'm getting that word wrong. So people in low economic circumstances have a greater risk of health issues. And so it's, the Board of Health was a hundred percent in favor of basic income project, but we never had the results. So I would like to somehow, if we're able to support the reinstation, reinstating of a pilot project in certain locales so that we can see the results of that before we support an actual bill to pass.
I think it's Counselor Moffett, then Counselor Devolin.
Thank you. So this is Committee of the Whole. We have a meeting in a couple of weeks. Could we, could we seek some clarification on our chicken and egg quandary prior to then? And maybe bring it back? That's my first question. And if I may, you know, we had a big, long meeting the other day about the development and implementation of the Community Safety and Well-being Plan, which is meant to bring a consolidation of existing services to the community. And it has as-yet unknown costs attached to it. Feeding into that is the creation of the civilian governance-based detachment board for O P P, which will also have additional costs as-yet unknown attached to it. So I'm just wondering if, where, and again, because I don't know, where does the, where does the housing and the basic income? Does it, is there a role for that all inside the safety well-being plan? I don't know. I know they live at different places, different levels of government. But we have a lot of really exciting changes coming for the community. Again, you know, I hate to be the lady with the checkbook, but we do have a responsibility for dollars. Just looking for, you know, a greater conversation of how different things can plug into what we already are required to do and how we could work to make it better through those existing processes.
Just before we go to you, Counselor Devolin, Mike, did you have a response that you could give to Carol's first question?
With respect to the, I think, the two week. When I first received this request from the Poverty Reduction Roundtable, I had asked if it could come to the council meeting. And they said that that would be too late. They needed it on this agenda. So I'm not sure that there's time to wait the two weeks. Certainly, I think we could get a lot more, we could even ask the Poverty Reduction Roundtable to come and speak to the issue if council wants that. But I'm not sure in terms of this bill and support for this bill, if they it seems like the two weeks is too late.
Counselor Devolin?
Which kind of gets to the guts of this. I'm not so naive as to think that the fact that we support a bill that looks at the proposal for this won't be interpreted as support, that we want to go forward with it before the finances and everything that's been mentioned here is found out and that we have the information to make an informed decision. The other part of it is, we already hear enough chatter that this is going to be part of the federal budget. And for me to give support to this before I see the federal budget, which is supposed to speak to this, I have a huge problem with. And I would say that that's the urgency, why they want it before the budget, not after the budget. That certainly at a minimum, not only the information that we've all mentioned that we'd like, I'd like to see what the federal government is proposing before I will support this bill, which is supposed to be just the interpretation of a process to know whether we move forward after that. I just, again, I'll come back to not enough information. Certainly, there's, the federal budget is going to be a huge part of this puzzle for me to be able to support this initiative. And I'm not prepared today to support it before I have any of those things.
Are there comments from other members of council? So I'm hearing that we, from what I've heard so far, that we do not have support for a resolution that supports the bill. Or is there an interest in, in Counselor Roberts' question that we would support the idea of reinstituting the pilot program? Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, it's interesting because that is actually one of the things in this bill is that it does want to establish a pilot project in one or more provinces that's contained within the content of this bill.
But what I'm hearing is that the pilot program would be better to have first. So we would be making an informed decision about the act and what its, what its end goal is. So just thoughts from other members of council. Carol, it looks like you've got a thought.
Boom, boom, I have many thoughts. It's early on in the agenda. Would it be completely untoward to just lay this aside and phone Mark Cox and ask her? Is that, is that a horrible thing to do?
Counselor Devolin?
I'm not sure what that would achieve. I mean, because the questions that I have are beyond the scope of the information that's available. But, I mean, the Poverty Reduction Committee and the number of its members and others have all along supported reinstituting the, the basic income project, pilot, whatever. Like, that's known. But anyways, it, just my thoughts.
So I'm hearing that we are generally not in support of passing a supporting resolution. But I just want to clarify, is there interest or would you like to pass a resolution asking for a pilot to be reinstated outside of the realm of the act or in advance? Counselor Shell?
Just, yes, I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, Counselor Ral?
Yeah, I think everybody's brought up all the right questions at the right time. I mean, do we support a bill? I would say yes, because the concept of it is a good idea. The way it's currently defined has too many holes in it. And I think a pilot, which could be defined if not, if not the one that's already being recommended or has been recommended, to me, would give us some insight. I truly do.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you. I sort of apologize for not taking more time on this agenda item prior to the meeting because I didn't have time to read the act or go to the detail. I read the information in our agenda package. But when I read, and maybe Counselor Kennedy was able to do some more digging, which is awesome. So is the act saying that, that this will happen? Or is the act, because in one of the paragraphs, it says, oh, gosh, the act would provide, as our C A O said, would provide much-needed answers about how a guaranteed basic income could work in partnership with the provinces, what effect it would have on the efficiency of government. So is the act implementing basic income? Or is the act saying, let's get the answers? I'm sorry, and that's, I didn't do my homework. Maybe somebody else can answer that.
Counselor Kennedy?
Actually, yeah, they have to report within two years of the, if this is a private members bill. So whether it has a very short life expectancy, as most private members bill do. However, it does say that a report to Parliament has to be made within two years, which outlines the strategy, I better make this right. Must prepare a report setting out the national strategy and cause it to be tabled in each House of Commons on the first fifteen days. But it more or less speaks to the content, is establish a pilot, create a framework of national standards, support research programs, collect and analyze data. And so it's all the things that we've been talking about, the chicken and the egg. This puts the process in place to get there. That's just my interpretation.
But does it also, once the process has been gone through, are we in fact supporting to go ahead with the guaranteed basic income as a result of these? Or is there a choice at the end?
There's a table report, setting out the strategy, and it's up to Parliament to yea or nay, I would think.
Counselor Roberts, then Counselor Moffett?
For the follow-up, because I was sort of then going directly to Counselor Kennedy. So for that reason, actually, I would support, I would support this resolution because it is not committing us to do anything. It's the next step forward, which is exactly what I was hoping. And so I would support this today.
Counselor Moffett, then Counselor Devolin? Sorry if I got that order wrong.
That's okay. And, you know, look, I hate to sound like, you know, the negative Nellie here. But I can't in good conscience support a letter that was clarified by a member of council who quickly called it up on his computer. That's, that's not enough for me as a representative of the community. And I want to do the best job I can, you know, the best job for the right reasons. And I still go back to what Counselor Devolin suggested is, this is an act, it's not a study. So it doesn't say that at the end of determining all those outcomes, that there's a choice, which was just asked a moment ago. If it turns out that it's wildly successful, and which I would imagine that it would be, the costs are as-yet unknown. And we're back to who's paying for it. So I just, this is the part I struggle with. It just, I, I read the words on the page and I, same as Counselor Roberts, I didn't go and read the act. I don't live in this world. And so I feel similarly that I should have done a better job. I'm really struggling because I can't, I can't just say, well, Pat read it to us out loud and that's good enough for me. Sorry, Pat. And there's, and it's too short notice, like, there's too many boundaries here. And I'm feeling, as usual these days, I'm feeling frustrated about this, so.
Counselor Devolin?
Yeah, and now we'll get into the nuts and bolts of Parliament and how it works. The reason that this is so urgent is because a private members bill, if there's an election calls died on the order sheet. So the reality is, that's why there's this, I'll call it artificial urgency to do this. I think that this bill and what it's I think that this bill and what it's proposing to do is a good idea. To, to do it in a hurry in the middle of a pandemic, categorically no. And if it's as important and is thought as much of, as all of you that I've listened to this morning, this is going to come back, whether it's the, the government that's in power or another, a private member that, that has seniority, that would be early on in another term of parliament. I think it'll come back to us. I, I, this is not going away. I think that, that across the, the province and the country, I think people would really, really like to know the answer to this. Whether we can do this and to, to, to do the process in a hurry is fraught with all kinds of risks, of which I won't belabor you going into whatever. And, and on the face of it, I understand how it doesn't seem that like we're giving tacit approval to go further down a road before we have studies. But the evidence of this I've seen in 40 years of provincial and federal legislation and how this stuff gets interpreted. I just, I, I'd like it to be done in a more wholesome, longer term, not in a hurry with a private members bill in parliament. And I would like, and the other part of it is, I think, given the nature and the scope and the cost of this, this is exactly the kind of thing that should be part of a first ministers conference. It should be the prime minister and all the premiers in the country bringing to the table their thoughts and their evidence and what they think to do it. And, and to, to do it in the absence of that, I think it will be, it will not be done well, if it's done at all. And it's just, like I say, I could, I could go on for hours here where I think doing it at this time in a hurry is a huge mistake. Having said that, the principle of what it's talking about and wanted to go through this, I'm wholly supportive of.
Councillor Moffett?
I don't know what the resolution says, but could we modify our resolution to express our support and principle of the, of the, of the idea? And then add a caveat, be dreaded but that, or however.
Well, and include a request for, for reinstating the program that was put in place. You know, I think that that's important. You know, the point that you made councillor De Volan about in the middle of a pandemic, I'm, I'm sure that the, the problem of poverty and, you know, as councillor Roberts said, related concerns as a result of that have become much clearer during the pandemic. I'm, I'm positive of that. But, you know, to rush it through because of that, I, I'm not, I'm not convinced. So could I just have a quick show of hands on whether or not you support supporting the act as it stands right now? Yes or no? And then we can go forward with a, with an amended resolution.
So resolutions stay now.
So the, the resolution we've drafted says be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information March 23, 2021 correspondence from the Halliburton County City of Coortle Lakes Roundtable for Ending Poverty Group. And that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that a letter be forwarded to MP Jamie Schmal and Federal Minister of Finance, Chrystia Freeland in support of Bill C273, an act to establish a national strategy for guaranteed basic income in Canada.
So councillor Moffett?
Do we know, again, too many holes. We don't know, two weeks is too late? What isn't too late? And if this is, if enough of us are sitting on a wobbly fence here, which it feels like to me, can we seek to get clarification for the questions council has asked? And have a very quick special meeting? Is, is it important enough for council? Or as councillor De Volan has said, that it, it may be related, you know, it's, it's election related and, and it's, it's a bit quick anyway. Just trying to find a way to not shut it down completely, but to do the best we can to find out the information we need to make the decision with certainty. I don't feel like we're making a decision with certainty. I would just put that out there.
Thoughts? Councillor Rael, I'm sorry, maybe before councillor Rael, if we could just hear from Mr. Redder?
I just, I'm just referring to the, it was Rachel Glulie who forwarded this to me. And, and I, I had said that, you know, I'd asked if it could be, would April 28 be too late? And her answer was yes, too late. The federal budget is being tabled on April 19. Ideally, responses and letters would be sent ahead of that. So that is, I guess, the April 19 is the date.
So that would suggest that if, if it's, the budget's coming out on April the 19th, that they've, they've made a decision about it already, one way or the other. Councillor Roberts, then councillor Moffett, and then I think we need to land.
Yeah, that's all I was going to say. It's probably whatever is in our resolution is based on principle and our ethics and our beliefs. Not necessarily what's going to actually happen, because that's just the reality of life in federal politics. And this councillor De Volan is related, you know, it's, it's complicated. However, passing the resolution as read shows our local people, shows our constituents here in Halliburton that we, that we, that we care, that we believe in this. So it may be a resolution in principle. But so I, again, I still would support it as, as today.
Councillor Rael, then councillor Shell?
I strongly support what councillor Moffett suggested. And that is like, we've all said in principle, we support this thing. We think it's a good idea in, in concept, you know, but we don't like the specific aspects of this draft wording. And I think, Mike, and just echoing a bit on what councillor Roberts was saying, is that we're saying to the people that we support this thing, but we just don't understand what it is that we're being asked to do at this point in time. And we need more information to do that. And something is right about the fact, how come such a short term for us to be able to review it? So I'd like to tell people that we support this thing, that we, that we support the intent of it. But as, as a group of people who represent a lot of people, we need, we need more information to make an intelligent decision on behalf of our people.
You know, it kind of goes back to the, the chicken and egg part of the discussion, that, that there's so much within this act that they say they're going to do, that I would want some of that information before I felt comfortable making a decision. You know, and I'm, I'm fully supportive of supporting our residents in any and every way that we can. But I, I want to know how we're going to be able to do that. Councillor Shell?
Your order. I feel like the last sentence of the resolution covers us in that, in that it's, it's fairly broad. So Mike, would you mind, mind just reading me the last sentence again? Because i- if I under, for the way it was read, the way that I understand it, I would support the resolution as it is right now.
That it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that a letter be forwarded to MP Jamie Schmal and the Federal Minister of Finance, Chrystia Freeland, in support for Bill C273, an act to establish a national strategy for guaranteed basic income in Canada.
Yeah, I feel like it's saying that it's, that we're, we're approving that there an act be created. Not that we're accepting an act that has been created, just by that wording. But maybe I, maybe I understand it differently than others.
Councillor Moffett?
And that to be created, the details of which not one of us is intimately enough familiar with to make an informed decision. Like, this is a really hard spot. But I also don't, I don't want to say, I don't get it, so no. I want to say, I need more information. Is there a way that we can do that? I know, I know that Monday is the 19th, but anyway.
I'm still stuck on, I, I like the idea of, of developing a strategy, but I still don't know whether the strategy will be developed and as a result of that, the basic guaranteed income will go forward. I, I don't feel informed enough personally. Let's, okay, let's have a mover and a seconder to put the motion on the floor and we'll vote on it. And if it passes, it passes. And if it doesn't, we will draft another resolution. So could a mover is councillor Roberts, seconded by councillor Shell?
Moved by councillor Roberts, seconded by councillor Shell. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the March 23, 2021 correspondence from the Halliburton County City of Coortle Lakes Roundtable for Ending Poverty Group. And that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that a letter be forwarded to MP Jamie Schmal and the Federal Minister of Finance, Chrystia Freeland, in support for Bill C273, an act to establish a national strategy for guaranteed basic income in Canada.
You have a question? Go ahead.
If county, if the date of county council is, is too late, then the resolution is inaccurate because it sends the resolution to council, to county council too late to be ratified. So the, the resolution as it's written can't stand. This is getting, this is getting worse.
That's true. But we could also agree that, because in fact, we are a county council, that the, the letter could go forward and, and it be basically given the stamp of approval at, at our county council meeting. Mr. Redder?
Typically, that's what I would do. The letter would indicate that this resolution was passed at Committee of the Whole, who, who are all members of county council and that it is, you know, and it will be forwarded to county council for consideration in, in two weeks.
So those in for, in favor of the resolution? That is failed. So would you like to draft a new resolution recommending support for the re-institution of, of basic guaranteed income pilot program? Councillor Roberts?
I think, I'm not sure who it was, said that maybe we have the, the next report after this is, is the quarterly report from the Poverty Roundtable. So maybe before we sort of jump into anything like that, we, we could have them come and do a delegation on, on that. And we can even see what was involved in the pilot project that, that we had in Ontario, in Lindsay. Like what, so a little more information. I don't think we need to jump on this right away to write another letter.
Councillor De Volan, then councillor Moffett?
Yeah, the, the Poverty Reduction Roundtable meets on the 26th of this month. Whatever. So I'm sure this will be a subject of discussion there. And more information pertaining to the existing pilot that was canceled, I'm sure that there's more information that can come back to us on the other side of that. Because we won't admit, we won't have met as a group before that date.
Councillor Moffett?
One last try. Today's Wednesday. The deadline for the letter is Monday. Is there, notwithstanding anybody's schedules, which I know are, none of us are, I've said before, none of us are sitting at home learning Spanish or baking bread. Is there, or what prevents us from getting the information we need for clarification and having a very quick meeting Friday morning?
Thoughts? Councillor De Volan?
I mean, I'll be honest, I don't think the type of information that I want is, is going to be known in that timeframe. If, if there's something that's substantial, that in the opinion of the warden and the CAO, that you want to call a special meeting, I, I would gladly attend. The, the second part is, the reality is, the federal budget's already cooked. I mean, they're into publishing and whatever, like what, what is going to be in or not in it is already done. It's a done deal.
Can I just ask again, councillor De Volan, you said that your, the Poverty Roundtable group is going to meet on the 26th?
Yep.
I kind of like the idea of inviting them to speak to county council on the 28th. And I think that we could gain more information. You know, we have already made a decision on the resolution for today. But that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, continue to, to investigate what possibilities there are for, you know, how we move forward with things. Councillor Moffett?
I like that idea. I think it's a, I think it's a nice middle ground and would establish, you know, a one-on-one or a face-to-face, couldn't be one-on-one, there's more than one of us here, but that interpersonal exchange exactly around the questions we need to have answered. So it's not a win for today's request on the agenda, but it's still a positive step for continuing to learn more in order to assist better going forward.
Okay, so we will move on to the quarterly update of the Coortle Lakes Roundtable. Does anyone want to speak to this? Can you add any light to it at all, councillor De Volan? Or it's just receiving it as information?
Yeah, just receiving. I mean, it's just, it, 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 it's very clear and concise, whatever gives good information directly to council.
Are there any questions or comments that you'd like to make about that report? Councillor Moffett?
Just that it's great to see the amount of work that's been done. And we know in our other conversations, including the one around the Safety Wellbeing Plan, that a lot of the agencies involved in assistance have done a tremendous job. And it's just, it's nice to see the report. It's that closing of the circle so that we can keep knowing what's going on in the field out there in, in industries and sectors that we don't live and work in. And it enables us to have more knowledge going forward. So I appreciate the reports.
Councillor De Volan?
And it, and this is a really good step going forward. The reality is, the group speaks rather than my interpretation of a number of things that go on. Just, we have from lots of groups like the Housing Corporation we heard this morning, this information coming back directly to all of you is, is way better than, than my personal interpretation of things that go on with this group. I just, I think this is a huge step forward and really appreciate it.
So could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the report? Councillor De Volan, councillor Kennedy?
Moved by councillor De Volan, seconded by councillor Kennedy. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the April 2021 quarterly update from the Halliburton County City of Coortle Lakes Roundtable for Ending Poverty.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, the next item is, is in response to our request to the municipalities to support moving forward with an economic development officer's position. And I think as of today, we also have correspondence from Algonquin Highlands. Have we received anything from Dicard at all as yet?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay. So we just received those letters of support for information, what we've received so far? Could I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Moffett, councillor Kennedy?
Moved by councillor Moffett, seconded by councillor Kennedy. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the March 23, 2021 correspondence from the municipality of Highlands East and the March 29, 2021 correspondence from the township of Mendon Hills regarding the county's initiative to proceed with the countywide economic development function and recruitment for an economic development position.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, we will move on to Rhodes. And I think we will bring Robert, our new director of public works into
Actually, I think we're
I'm sorry, my apologies to Sil, that they, they'll be offered to, to us by Sil. With Robert in attendance to answer any inquiries that may come to him. There he is. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Morton and fellow councillors. I, I'll be presenting the three status reports. We, I have a few, we have a few updates to the capital project status report. And the first one is the preservation rejuvenation tender, which was awarded to Superior Road Products. And it's all within our allotted budget as well. The preservation of crack ceiling as well. as well, that it was awarded to Northern Sealants as well within our allotted budget for that item. And we had a roadside protection tender for the culvert on County Road four, Essenville Culvert close, which were, all tenders were quite above budget. So we reissued the tender, but within the fishtail culvert tender as part of the roadside protection item. They're basically in the same neighborhood. They're not far apart and I believe will benefit from just increasing the, the amount of work for that tender. So it will be a part of a, an addendum for that project. And also in the operations and approvals, the pedestrian crossing at Halbium is also operational. The parts were replaced and it seems to be working well now. And that's, that's pretty well it for the status reports.
Are there any questions on the status report? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive it? Counselor Devolin, Counselor Moffett?
Moved by Counselor Devolin, second by Counselor Moffett, be it resolved that the April two thousand twenty-one status reports on capital projects, operations and road maintenance be received for information by Halliburton County Committee of the Whole.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next is the purchase of a backhoe.
Yep, the debacle, we had a backhoe scheduled for replacement in two thousand twenty-one as part of our ten-year program, replacement program. We sent out an RFP and as well advertised. And we received two proposals, which one was not within specifications. And the qualified proposal was from Toromont Cat. And the proposal price was within our budgeted amount. And so we are recommending to move forward with the purchase.
A question, Counselor Devolin?
Yeah, just so, um, obviously with one quote in, I don't take, I don't quibble with the supplier, the machine or the price. But in terms of items like this in COVID times and supplies, is it a huge challenge to, to actually get any type of equipment, you know, be it you know, plows and plow trucks or loaders or backhoes, whatever? I know at, at the lower tier, you know, we kind of got used to twelve-month lead time and just got informed on the last one that it's an eighteen-month lead time. Is that playing into some of these capital replacements of, of equipment like this still?
It is to, to some degree. I've contacted the, the supplier and they are saying September, October for this piece equipment. So it's, it's pretty quick turnaround compared to a plow truck or, or one tons and pickups. So it's pretty reasonable.
If there are no other questions, could I have a mover in a second or to move forward with this? Counselor Devolin, Counselor Kennedy?
Moved by Counselor Devolin, second by Counselor Kennedy, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information, the staff report for the supply of a loader backhoe contract two thousand twenty-one dash one dash D. And then Halliburton County Committee of the Whole recommends to Halliburton County Council that the contract for the supply of a loader backhoe contract two thousand twenty-one dash one dash D be awarded to Toromont Cat for the bid amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents plus applicable taxes.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing under EMS or finance today. The next item is our IT status report. And we have Mr. March to provide that to us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of council. This is my standard monthly IT report going over the stats, help desk stats, where we're at with our security awareness testing and some project statuses. I don't have anything I think is necessary to play the council. I need any direction on. So I'd be taking any questions.
Any questions for Mike? Counselor Moffett?
Uh, thank you. I, I suppose I could pick up the phone and ask Mike myself, but he's on the screen. I know there's been some changes. You had sent out an email regarding sort of email security and servers and whatnot. It seems lately to me, a tremendous number of known contacts are ending up in my spam. Don't know if anyone else is experiencing that. And then, but I'm getting an awful lot of Tim Horton's cards and stuff. So I know that this is a constant challenge for what gets filtered out and what doesn't. And whether you're raising and lowering the bars or not. I mean, I look at the spam, my spam summary every day anyway, but it's just notable that there's a tremendous number of, increasing number of, of known contacts that are now ending up in spam. It's not the end of the world. It's just, it's just a comment.
If I
Go ahead, Mike.
If I may, so we typically don't adjust the settings in, in any great detail. We subscribe to blacklist services. That's kind of how it works. So we, we have subscriptions to companies that monitor and add and remove IP addresses, email addresses, services to blacklist. And if somebody ends up on that blacklist, then it will get blocked by our spam server. What we've seen in the past for shared email services like Gmail, Outlook, Hotmail, so on, is because of the, it's kind of like a whack-a-mole game with them. They've got so many IP addresses, so many email servers. What happens is if somebody's using the Gmail server for spam purposes, that IP address gets blocked until this Gmail or can, can remove that IP address. So sometimes you can be having a conversation with unknown contacts, say, say Gmail user, and then mid-conversation, the email address gets, gets blocked and you're wondering, you're thinking, the person's just kind of stopped the conversation, then it's tracked, but however, it's caught by spam. Because depending on the email server or the, I guess, any of the internal servers from people's infrastructure, that's kind of routing that email address. If it's going through a server that's been flagged and their IP address is in this, is on a spam list, then it gets blocked. So I guess all that's to say is it's a, you know, it is a bit of a whack-a-mole. So what I can do is take a look and see if there's anything we can do to kind of ratchet up or back some of these things. There are whitelist that you can use. So if you have a known contact and this person seems to be getting caught in the spam list more often than not, add them to the, to the improvement. Usually just by unjunking them from your spam report does that. But feel free if you're, if you want to send me an email address that it's, it's definitely don't want blocked, then we can add it to a whitelist. The other thing that I usually recommend to people is the spam list only comes once every twenty-four hours. You can adjust that time. Have it come once every twelve hours or once every four. So you reduce the amount of time that an email sitting there. And then I'll also look at the higher than normal incidence of Tim Hortons and other few ones. I did get a couple of my emails this morning and it's on my list to, to look at.
Any other questions for Mr. March? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive the IT status report? Counselor Shell, Counselor Moffett?
Moved by Counselor Shell, second by Counselor Moffett, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information, the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one IT department status report.
All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing under planning, nothing under personnel. So next on the agenda is the two April tourism report. So we'll bring in our Director of Tourism and
Good morning, Warden and Council.
Good morning.
Two things to touch on today from a tourism perspective. One is a potential fishing tournament that we're looking at doing. And the second is High Caliburn. So I'll start with the fishing tournament. We were approached back in February by the Anglers Atlas, who runs a number of online virtual fishing tournaments. We have spoken to them in prior years, but haven't worked with them in the past. But we're thinking this year because there is not a lot to do in the community, not a lot of safe activities that we can do and promote. We thought this would be perhaps a fun outlet for our visitors or for residents. So essentially what would happen is if we were to go forward, the Anglers Atlas would create basically a microsite for us. They would build the entire thing. It would be my Halliburton Highlands branded, so it'd be a white labeled website. Participants download an app called My Catch to log the information of the fish that they've caught as well as the location, but that would be kept secret on the front end, but just so that we could verify on the back end that it was actually caught within the Halliburton Highlands. The rankings and information would be available via this website and the, within our section. I included a sample of the tournament in your agenda package. Tourism Windsor Essex launched on April twenty-third, will be launching April twenty-third, but you can see a sample there. Essentially, there's an entry fee for, for participants, can be anywhere from ten to fifty dollars. We would recommend a very nominal entry fee. Prizing can be funded either by the entry fee or, or entirely by the tourism department. I think we would do a hybrid of both. We would recommend a mix of cash and prizing, and that would come from the existing tourism budget. Now, the reason I'm bringing this to, forward to you today is because to buy the technology and partner with Anglers Atlas, it's a five thousand dollar setup fee. However, this entirely turnkey, so the Anglers Atlas would handle all of the technology, the vetting of entries, all of that. In addition, I thought it would be a great way to work with the Halliburton Highlands Outdoors Association and doing some co-promotion. I've spoken to them. We've, we've had some early talks. They're saying that it wouldn't conflict with any other similar local tournaments. And again, it is all online. So folks could, you know, be by themselves and participate and not in a crowd, obviously. We would be looking at potentially a May launch with trout only until the third week of May and then opening up with pickerel, walleye and pike, you know, throughout June. When it could expand into bass and muskie, depending on how long we run the tournament for. And I'm sure Counselor Kennedy can correct me if I'm wrong with those opening dates, but that's what our research tells us. So I don't know what your thoughts are around the tournament and I, I realize it is a bit of an investment, but we've also been quite careful with our marketing dollars this year, as you can imagine, not having some of our print investments and longer-term investments as per usual.
Questions or comments? Counselor Moffett?
Uh, thank you. On the Windsor Essex site, I think it's called Get Hooked. I think I'm going to assume that's the same program. They've just called it Get Hooked. And they, under there, they, they list a number of locally-based prizes, cooler bags, gift cards and whatnot. Would we do the same thing and that's what would come from the budget to buy that? I don't think now is the time to be asking small businesses to be donating. So
Yeah, definitely not. We would be using our tourism budget. I noted somewhere in the report that we would leverage the tourism budget to buy some of that local surprising. So we'd be supporting some local businesses as well.
So do you have any idea, Amanda, on the, on the amount of money that prizes might cost? You know, what the total investment?
I think what, what would be reasonable, I think, to make it exciting for the fishers, we probably have a grand prize of around a thousand dollars and then have a couple of smaller prizes. So I think I'm, I'm thinking around two thousand dollars, probably all in plus the five thousand dollar investment for the technology and management of the, of the tournament.
Okay, other thoughts or questions? Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, thanks. And Amanda, I looked up the Anglers Atlas. And I Googled Halliburton on it. Actually, none of the lakes that show up are with, are in Halliburton County. It shows Balsam, Baptiste and Shimong. All within, also doesn't say, yeah, you're in Fisheries Management Zone fifteen. I'm actually a bit surprised that the county wants to start taking on sponsoring fishing tournaments. My thought has always been if we approach this as a festival, perhaps similar to the Perch Festival, then that's something I could get behind because you could incorporate partnerships with their lake associations, with their restaurants, on how to prepare panfish or that kind of a thing. But I noticed that in twenty eighteen, the tourism department also supported the Big Fish Derby here in Halliburton County. And I've not seen any results of participation or numbers or money or anything. And the Ontario Kayak Associate Virtual Tour ran a very successful tournament last September at Kushegoigamaw with twenty-five people from all over Ontario who actually stayed, put beds, their heads in beds. And to me, that seems to be more of the mandate of what we should be doing rather than sponsoring this kind of a thing. If we want to put five grand into something, invite one of the big tours to come here for a classic, as was done ten years ago, where a hundred teams came from all over Ontario and stayed here for a week. Anyways, I can't support this as presented.
Counselor Moffett?
So I went to the tourism side. I went to the Windsor Essex site, but I have just looked up the Anglers Atlas. And I concur with Counselor Kennedy. It says Halliburton is located in Zone fifteen, is surrounded by Baptiste Lake, Skugog Lake, Simcoe, and the map shows Muskoka. So I'm not giving money to anybody whose map doesn't even know who we are, what we are, what we offer. And so I, I, I concur with Counselor Kennedy.
Can I respond to two?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. So the mapping is actually a recent, a recent problem on their website. We were in the right location, but they just did a technology upgrade that put us into the wrong zone. So they are actually correcting that. So there's that, that's on them. If we were going to build a large fishing tournament or support one, I'm all for that to get. But at this time, the reason I'm recommending this virtual is because we can't be putting heads in beds right now. We can't be bringing people here. So my thought was that this is a turnkey opportunity for something to promote to folks that are here and, and not, of course, if we were going to do a larger heads in bed, supporting local business, going into restaurants, we'd have to do that outside of COVID. So that's why I presented this, this option today. But of course, we're fine not to do it as well and whatever council recommends. But I just wanted to say that's why we weren't creating our own fishing tournament with all of those elements in place.
Counselor Moffett?
Which leads us back to the, you know, the elephant in the room philosophical discussion is stay home, but come fishing. Stay home, but, but rent a cottage, stay home, but support local business. So where, what are, it's really, it's a really a struggle. How, how do we support our, our local businesses when when we're not supposed to have people moving around? And it's not just in tourism, it's just in life. So you know, we are, we are in a shutdown where people aren't supposed to be moving. I know that this is scheduled for later on, but we don't know what's going to happen. And there's a history of, of shutdowns not being lifted on the date they say they may be. And that's it. Just, it's the philosophical. Like I say, that, you know, stay, stay home, but come fishing, because people will come fishing for a term.
Other thoughts, questions or comments? Counselor Roberts?
Thanks. Excuse me, lost my voice there. I, I'm just wondering in conjunction with the, with our own outdoor association, if there isn't anything on a smaller scale. Because we talked about tourism can just be even hyper local tourism. It's can be that residents and cottagers enjoying where they already are. So is there anything that we could do with our, with the outdoor association to do some kind of virtual fishing tournament where they take a photograph of the measured fish and catch and release and all that stuff is on a, on a smaller scale, but still sure promote, not necessarily people from outside of the county coming into the area, but people that are already here, which is that hyper or what local, local tours idea?
May I respond through you, Warden?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. So this, just to be clear, this is only for people who are here. Fishing is an essential. You are allowed to fish, of course, you know, with the tournament aspect. I don't know what that adds, that adds to it, although I know it would be allowed. And yes, we could work with the, the outdoors association and do it on a smaller scale. The, the issue is we're paying the five thousand dollars for someone else to create that online technology, for someone else to verify the catches, the length, all of that. We do not have the resources as a tourism team at this time, especially during what we're going through to be doing that verification. If HHOA wanted to plan the whole thing and manage it all and we were to promote it, then we'd definitely be open to that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing mixed messages and I'm not hearing from any other members of council or what their thoughts are. So far, it's, it's kind of a, a no. Counselor Devolin?
I'm a no for the reasons Counselor Kennedy's already stated.
Any other questions before we put the resolution on the floor? Okay, could I have a move? Okay, could I have a mover in a second or for the resolution? Mr. Rutter?
Sorry, the resolution actually incorporates receiving the report, and it had specific reference to the fishing tournament and then the High Caliburn Festival as well. So I've removed the fishing tournament thing. If Amanda could finish her report, then we could capture every council or committee's direction in each of the three areas.
Okay, carry on with the second portion of your report.
Perfect. So, you know, speaking of moving people around in the county and where we're allowed to go, it's a nice segue into the 2021 High Caliburn Festival. As you know, it's a monumental task to pull off the High Caliburn Festival every year with a lot of planning that actually needs to start essentially tomorrow, very quickly. So I wanted to bring forward for discussion a couple of different options. We have three different options for if the 2021 festival can go forward. I'm sure you've all read all of the notes in the package, but just a few key considerations, that if social distancing is still in place in September, which likely will be, we would have hikers, you know, spanned up to potentially 200 feet, almost, you know, a little more than half a length of a football field. So would there be safety implications there? Another implication we thought about was, you know, first aid is required, minor first aid on hikes, often, you know, three to five different applications throughout the festival. So would it even be possible for a volunteer to safely administer first aid to a participant? What will this mean in terms of supplied materials in the hike kits? Would we have to put a lot of PPE in? Would we have different training for hike leaders? It just adds a different level of complication this year, of course. And in terms of financials, would there be more insurance implications than years prior, based on the pandemic and some accommodations we may need to make this year? So I presented three options. The first being, we go forward with High Caliburn Festival full-scale, which would be the full program, printed program, marketing program. Of course, we would, you know, focus more locally within our provincial regulations, which would save some revenue compared to prior years. There would be increased costs, again, potentially depending on what supplies are needed for hike kits, sanitizers, PPE, all of that. So due to the cancellation of the 2020 High Caliburn Festival, as you know, 37,500 was moved into our reserve. We would also provide an option for some businesses who may be interested in taking part in a sponsorship, but we absolutely would not be asking businesses to, you know, to become sponsors. It's just that I have had some businesses actually interested and ask me and reach out to me, so we would still do some level of sponsorship there. But of course, with that money in reserve, we wouldn't be reliant on that sponsorship revenue as we have been in past years. Option B is what I'm calling the High Caliburn Festival Light. It would be sort of similar to the smaller scale we've done with the winter additions in the past, so we wouldn't have a printed program, all the information would be online, fewer hikes, maybe less spaces available. The options would allow us to control regulations so that we could add or limit spaces, depending on regulations. We could also maybe enable for easier last-minute cancellations. So if we didn't have those printed materials in market, we didn't have a lot of printed ads or online ads even, we could pull back if we needed to. The training of hike leaders, the distribution of hike kits, first aid training, it all gets more complicated within COVID, but I'm sure we could figure out ways around it. And of course, the marketing costs would decrease with this light festival, but likely costs would increase with what we would need to put in the hike kits around PPE sanitization, that sort of thing. And then the third option is to actually just cancel the festival. As you know, there are many unknowns at this time, many festivals across the country are being canceled. If this is the recommendation of County Council, it could be considered that the 2021 High Caliburn Budget, which is 33,500, would be moved into reserve for 2022, which could be leveraged as our largest and best. Hopefully, by next September, we could go all out and also, of course, have the winter festival next year, hopefully, as well in February. So I'll leave those three options on the table for you to discuss.
Counselor Kennedy, then Counselor Moffett?
Thank you. And I must say, the first time I read this, I thought, well, let's cancel it. But the more I kept thinking about it is, I'm really afraid we're going to lose the momentum of what has been built here. This is a national treasure that your department and people within the county have been able to create. I don't want to lose that momentum. So at this point, I would support a light version. I think it's more nimble, that could be modified up or down, depending on where we are with vaccinations and where we are, basically where we are with this situation we're in. So that would be my recommendation is B, light.
Counselor Moffett, then Counselor Shell.
And I was going to go in the opposite direction. I'm willing to look at the options. I just wonder about taking advantage of the things that exist in Halliburton County that we could move online. I still think we should all be struggling with the philosophy of stay at home but come here and do a thing. So, and I know that the marketing and promotions has been hyper-focused for hyper-local, and there are definitely people out and about. So could, even if we did, I was going to say, don't have it this year, but spend some of those unspent funds on moving more things online or finding additional innovative ways to market and support local business. You know, a Did You Know series or make some notes, like, you know, hidden gems in Halliburton, self-drive excursions, there's online pocket tours. We still get people out and about to learn about the community, stop in restaurants and pick up food and things like that. Or, following up on Counselor Kennedy's idea, you could do Halliburton Light and still try and, you know, promote some of those things. I mean, years ago, we had the, sorry, I've just had a complete gap on it. The 10 wonders or the seven wonders of Halliburton County, and there's, I think there's some fun things we could do that aren't expensive that could get people moving in and around the community.
Counselor Shell?
I would agree with option B. I would hate to see the momentum of this get lost. Also, I mean, it's five months away, and with the vaccine rollout, et cetera. I mean, I'm hoping that we're not in that position of lockdown where we're not allowed to travel or not asked to travel, or asked not to travel, pardon me, between communities. And if that is the case at the time, then we can pull it back. But I'd hate to see just canceling it. I would go with option B as well.
Counselor Devolin?
Option B for all the reasons already given.
Counselor Burton?
Option B as well.
Counselor L?
I would say option B on one condition, that is, if it gets to the point we have the ability to shut it down. Because I'm not looking in the mirror in the morning and finding out I'm responsible for somebody being sick. But if things go the way they do, I don't know why option B would not work, you know? You're right.
Well, I think the ability to cancel has got to be understood, depending on what the circumstances are at the time. I also like the idea of proceeding to think about some of the ideas that Counselor Moffett raised, because, you know, I like that idea, and I think that we can, we could probably make some tracks in that direction. Okay, so any other questions? So we assume that we're looking at Halliburton Hike Festival Light? You had a question, Counsel Roberts?
Yes, it just, so B as well, so won't belabor that. But also, I'd really like to see if we could add some more hikes on our rail trail. So I don't know how many hikes were on the rail trail last year, but I've been, if at all possible, if we could do one there. It might mean we don't have large parking lots at one end or the other, but what we do up at the Halliburton Inn. But anyway, maybe I could talk to Mandolph Line after that, but I have an idea of doing a longer hike, like a, you know, 15K hike or something on the rail trail. So I'll bring that up with Amanda another time if we go with B, let's see.
Okay, so the resolution that you have before you, Mike, you're taking out the portion about the... Okay, so could I have a mover in a second or for the resolution to be read? Counselor Moffett, Counselor Kennedy?
Moved by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives your information, the April 2021 Tourism Report, and that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council, that the Halliburton County Committee of the Whole recommends to Halliburton County Council, option B for the 2021 High Caliburn Festival.
All in favor? That's Carrie. Thanks, Amanda.
Warden did.
Yes, go ahead.
I think Amanda had her hand up, and maybe, although we voted, maybe she wanted to add something. I don't know if it was to my comment or someone else's comment. So before she leaves the screen, can I, can we just hear from her? Thank you.
For that opportunity.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just wanted to say that I will bring forward a report on the local marketing that we have been doing, because we are doing sort of a local wonders thing. We're doing wild water, whitewater, Wild Wednesdays. We're doing a lot of, and our social media is through the roof, local businesses. We're doing all sorts of things to support them and specific programming. So I will bring forward a report, that's on me to fill you all in on the things we're doing there. But I, the other element that speaks to High Caliburn really quickly is I just wanted to say that the dates would be from the 16th to the 19th of September. I neglected to mention that in my report. And thank you for the support.
Thought the dates were in the report. Thank you for that. We look forward to hearing further details from you on your department's activities, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we've dealt with item number 14 before we, and I, we have nothing under closed. But before we adjourn, there's a couple of quick things. One, I think Mike has got a bit of an update for us on meetings, and I would like to bring our Director of Planning in for just a brief moment. So if we could ask Charlesy to join us? Good morning. How are you this morning?
I'm great, thank you.
On my way, I feel great, she says. Charlesy, I just wanted to ask you in to just say a few words, you know, about the level of dedication and professionalism that you have brought to the county and in particular to our planning department. You've worked on an incredible number of projects, some which were, I'm no doubt, unanticipated. And many of them have brought some rather extraordinary challenges, you know, for you to work with and on. And we really appreciate the work that you've done and the level of professionalism that you've managed to do them in. On behalf of County Council, I just want to offer our absolute best wishes on your new venture/adventure, because I really see it as an adventure, you know, going into the, into the north for you and your family. So just best wishes. Thank you for everything that you've done for us, and we wish you luck.
Thank you very much, Warden, and to all members of County Council. I appreciate that, thank you.
You're more than welcome. And Mike, did you have something that you wanted to bring to us?
Yeah, just, and I guess I wanted to give council a bit of a look into the next month of meetings. I, we had, I guess, originally planned to have another meeting of our Service Delivery Review Implementation Steering Committee in April. I've had an opportunity to get EOR staff and Rogers staff, now that we can announce the preferred proponent, and they are available in the afternoon of our council meeting on the 28th of April. They'll do a full update on, EOR will give an update on the cell project and the gig proposal and what they are doing in that area. And then Rogers will be in a position to talk about their project more specifically. So because they were available in April, I'm suggesting that we move the Service Delivery Review Implementation Steering Committee to the afternoon of Committee of the Whole in May. So, and we, I have been, I've met with the CAOs, the local CAOs, as a follow-up to your previous meeting. We've put, we'll be preparing a full written report for council with a little more analysis around each of the recommendations and providing some additional information on how we might move forward. So the, what I'm suggesting is, there was a little bit of conversation where some people said, we never schedule anything for the afternoon of County Council anyway. So what I'm suggesting is for the next two meetings, please don't schedule anything in the afternoon. That would be, I think those will be two very exciting meetings. The other thing I would propose to do, and we have talked about this before, is for the EOR update, I would propose to make sure that all members of your local councils as well knew about the meeting. And I guess I'll have a conversation with the Warden about what that participation can look like. But certainly, we'll make them aware that that presentation is happening. I know that it's an area of interest for everyone.
Any questions or comments about that? No issues with keeping our afternoons open on the next two County Council meetings? Okay, thank you for that. Unless there are any comments or questions, could I have a mover in a second or for adjournment? Counselor Kennedy? Counselor Moffett, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be it resolved that the April 14th, 2021 meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole now adjourned.
All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you for continuity in that, Counselor Kennedy. We really appreciate it.
I'll miss you when I'm gone.
Okay, have a good afternoon, everyone. We'll see some of you at the library, boy.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Stay safe.